Thank you all for joining the session. Good, so let's start with a quick word of prayer. Father, we just want to thank you for this evening. Thank you for making it possible for us to gather together to share your word once more. Father, each time we've come to you to learn, you haven't disappointed us. You've given us your word, you've given us the truth. Father, and we're trusting in you to do the same for us today, Lord. As many as have gathered here today, Father, I pray you open each person's mind to receive the word. And I pray that you grant the grace to those who be speaking, Father, that they may be inspired with your wisdom and understanding and not to lean on their own understanding. Thank you, Lord, for hearing us in Jesus's name we pray, amen. Okay. Good. So, those of you that were here last week, you would be aware that we've been talking about, we had been talking about salvation, and that led us to start talking about Isaiah chapter 53, which we said is a seminal passage in the Bible. That passage is extremely, we've been talking about salvation, and that has led us to the subject of, you know, Isaiah chapter 53. And we saw that in Isaiah chapter 53, Isaiah begins with, "Lord, who has believed our report? And to whom has an arm of the Lord been revealed?" We said that there was a twist in the salvation message, that the Israelites, the Jews, did not really expect that God would bring salvation to mankind in the manner that he did. First and foremost, they thought the salvation was just meant for the Jews and not for the rest of us. And then they discovered the salvation is actually for everyone. But because of the manner in which God revealed himself, they were just surprised. It wasn't what they were expecting. And because it wasn't what they were expecting, they rejected it. Many Jews rejected Jesus. But their rejecting the salvation message brought a blessing to the rest of us, because Paul took the gospel in very simple form to the Gentiles, and they believed. And when they believed, they were saved. Now, we are the Gentiles who believed and were saved. But we live in very extraordinary times. We live in times where, I think, the word of God has been under attack more than it has ever been. You know, when I was growing up, most, I mean Christians, true born again Christians, were the minority, just a small number of people. And you knew that these were the Christians. You knew that these were the serious Christians. And you knew by their conduct, you knew the way they prayed was different, the way they approached salvation was different. I used to go to Methodist church as a child, and I remember that those that were born again in the church were different. When they were ever given in the youth, the youth wing of the church, whenever they were given opportunity to preach, they would preach about the second coming, they would preach and ask people whether they were ready for Jesus's coming. That was not what the main church itself preached. Its emphasis was not on that, but these young people would preach like that, because it was clear they had experienced something, and that's what they wanted to share with the rest of us. So, the message of salvation was very clear. You were, if you were an unbeliever, you knew those were the believers, and that if you didn't really want your life to change, you just didn't join them. You left them to their devices, let them do their own thing. But today, we have a very strange phenomenon. Where the church, Christian activity, especially in Africa and West Africa, specifically in Ghana, is the mainstream. What goes on, you know, when people are talking about church stuff, that's mainstream. Everybody's going to church. Everybody is a believer. Everybody is using Jesus's name. Everybody's talking about Jesus. But there's a difference. In those, when I became a Christian, my friends started avoiding me before they knew that I was a Christian. Why did they start avoiding me? They saw a difference. They saw a difference. I remember my roommate started calling our room man Sinai, and he used to stay away from the room. In other words, you got saved and something changed in your life. It's so much, so drastic was the change, others just knew, gosh, this guy has stepped into another dimension. This guy is living a different life. And unless we want to live the kind of life that he's living, let's just stay away. But today, everybody's in church. Something has happened. Because if all the Christian activity we see around us, all the church activities we see around us, if they are all truly of the same caliber as the one that I'd been describing to you earlier, I was describing to you earlier, the nation should be changed. Stealing should be down. Lying should be down. Corruption should be down. You should be able to leave your phone in the church, go, come back two hours later and find it there. You should be able to leave your door unlocked. A few years ago, I was at home when a taxi driver, I mean, a taxi driver rang the doorbell. We opened it, and he said, "Are you so and so and so?" He mentioned my name. I said, "Yes." And he said, "I think this is yours." And he handed me my wallet with my driving license in it and other documents, debit cards and things like that. I said, "What happened? Where did you find it?" He said, "You found it somewhere at the roadside or something." Now, we were able to track it down and discover as early how that happened. Some workmen had come and worked in our house, and I think I'd left it lying down somewhere, and one of them had taken it. But in order that, you know, they took what they wanted from it and just threw the rest away. And this guy found it and brought it, looked for me and gave it to me. I don't know that he was Christian. There are not that many Christians in the country. People can be truthful, they can engage in equitable conduct when they don't even know Jesus. Some principles were passed down by their forefathers, the John Worsleys, John Banyan, all these different people who once graced this country, they left a legacy. They left a certain type of Christianity, a Christianity that is manifest in conduct, in your behavior. They left it behind. Today, if you try preaching to the average Brit, he will get angry with you. I was trying preaching to a lady a few years ago. She looked at me and said, "What has this got to do with anything?" They don't see, some people get offended for sending them Christian material. You have to apologize to them, Ben was telling me. But Christian conduct, the Ten Commandments, if we're to go around the world and do a survey in each country on how people adhere to the Ten Commandments, where, which countries would we find more adherence of the Ten Commandments in? It will be countries that today call themselves atheist. They don't believe in God anymore. But the principles that govern Christianity have been embedded in them, so that that's how they live. They don't even think that it's possible to live any other way. One of the biggest problems, one of the biggest sins you can commit in this part of the world is lying. Tony Blair lost his job as Prime Minister because he was judged to have lied. I mean, didn't lose his job because he handed it down, but he lost his popularity. He was incredibly popular as a Prime Minister, incredibly popular, until he was judged to have lied. He didn't kill anybody. He didn't steal money. He was judged to have lied. That was like the unpardonable sin in the country where most people consider themselves to be atheist. Meanwhile, take the same standards and go to a country that considers itself to be Christian and find out how they stack up. The Christianity that we are practicing in Africa right now, it has nothing to do with what Jesus left behind. When you read Matthew chapter 5, all the way to Matthew chapter 7, what do you read? What do you find there? Well, you find there the sermon on the mount. And there Jesus starts to tell them, "You have heard it said, 'That shall not fornicate; that shall not do the..." I say to you, if you think about it, if you think and lust about it, you have done it. You have heard it said that you shall not murder, but I'm telling you, if you call your brother a fool or whatever for nothing, you are a murderer. When Jesus finished, the people were shocked. They just couldn't believe, what standards this man laying down? We couldn't keep the Ten Commandments and look at the standards that you are laying down? So if we are falling down on Ten Commandments, how on earth can we consider ourselves to be followers of Jesus? If we can't even do the basics, how can we consider ourselves to be followers of Jesus? We are lying to ourselves. We are lying to ourselves, and what we have seen in the Bible study is that we have created our own version of Christianity. Once more, when I say "we," I put myself in the category and I shared, you know, with all of us, we have created a version of Christianity that the apostle Paul would not have been familiar with. Peter would have been shocked about it, because when they followed Jesus, when they left their fishing nets to follow Jesus, this is not what they were thinking about. I mean, today, the measure of someone's faithfulness as a Christian is how much he possesses. Jesus said, "Verily, I tell unto you, the life of a man does not consist in the abundance of the things he possesses." The exact opposite that Jesus said is the standard that we now live by. So people come to church and give testimony, "Pray, pray, praise the Lord. The Lord blessed me, and the Lord did this, and the Lord did that. Thank God that the Lord blessed you." But it is, it is not a measure of anything. How many blessings you've received in your life is not a measure of anything. It's not a measure of your faithfulness. People who are a thousand times more faithful than you, were going destitute without food to eat, without a place to sleep, how can you be better than them because you are receiving some blessings? Blessings are not a measure of your faithfulness. You say, "If anybody will live a godly life, he will suffer." That's what the Bible says. So what have we done? We have changed the goalposts. We have changed the conditions. We've changed the standards that Jesus laid down. But you cannot change the standards and still have the same faith that Jesus brought. If you change the standards, you change the faith. You have a different faith from the one that Jesus brought. And what we are beginning to see in the Bible study is that the most fundamental of the changes that has happened to modern day Christianity is a change in the Jesus, in the image of Jesus that we, that had been sold to us. We read that Isaiah 53, Isaiah 53 verses 2 and 3, it says, "There was no calmness in him, no beauty, nothing in him that we should desire him. He was not attractive. He was not impressive to look at." Those drawings of Jesus that you see with the blue eyes, flowing hair, that Jesus that you see is a figment of somebody's imagination. Because the Jesus, the real Jesus who walked on the earth, he was a Middle Eastern man who lived in the part of the country that was hot and humid, where they didn't have showers and WC's, where they didn't have a shower every single morning, where they didn't have deodorant and toothpaste, and many of the things that we take for granted today. If one of us got catapulted from today, from our times into Jesus's time and lived there, we would call many of the people their gross. We would hold our noses, because they would not be up to our standard. If the Jesus of those days came to you in the way that he appeared to John and Peter and James and all the other apostles, you would have a problem accepting him. You would have a problem accepting him, because he would not meet your standards. The Jesus that you claim to be worshiping today is a figment of your imagination. You created him. You created him beautifully. You painted him beautifully. And you are worshiping him. One day, a man came to him and said, "Master, I'll follow you wherever you go." Life was hard in those days. People were self-employed, but it wasn't easy. Or they were farmhands, but it wasn't easy. It seemed like if he followed Jesus, maybe his livelihood would be guaranteed. So the man said, "I'll follow you wherever you go." Jesus said, "Foxes have holes. Birds of the air have nests. But the son of man has nowhere to lay his head." He poured cold water on this man's expectations, because there are people who will follow Jesus for what they can get. If you promise them the earth, if you promise them richness, if you promise them answered prayers, if you promise them healing, if you promise them that they won't suffer, they will pass the exams, they will get the job they are looking for, God will bless them to honor himself, that if they shall pay their tithes, that if they shall give some uncommon offering, the Lord will do this for them. Why would they not come? Why would they not fill up the church? Why are churches packing up with people? Why are they bursting at the seams? Is that because there's a revival in the nation? Is that because people are so desperate to know God that they're saying, "You know what? I don't care if I lose them all my possessions. I just want Jesus." No. These are people who have come, just like that man said, "I will follow you wherever you go." Why? Because I can see that it shall be well with me if I follow you. That is the Christianity that is being sold today. Come to Jesus, he will sort you out. So when, and the thing is, if the people came like that with that kind of mentality, and the preacher said to them, "I think you are the wrong address. I think you've come to the wrong place." If you came because you think Jesus is going to sort you out, you are in the wrong place, because that's, that was not his mission. He said, "Repent, for the kingdom of God is at hand." He came because of his father's agenda. It so happens that the father is merciful, is compassionate, and he wants to show you how much he loves you, so therefore he will perform miracles. But he came because of his own agenda. But what you've done is you have taken his son, the father's son, the blessing he gave to the earth in order to be able to do his will on earth, you've taken that to be your own personal blessing. And it's a case, okay, Jesus, you are now mine. What are you going to do for me today? How are you going to bless me today? And whatever you want, I will do it. But what you just mean is that I will be religious for you. I will go to church. I will pay my tithes. I'll do those things. And then you do this and that for me. Transactional Christianity, that's what it is. Transactional. You do this for me, I do this for you. Transactional Christianity. It's not transformational. True Christianity is transformational. You come to him, you surrender to him, he changes your life. He changes your coordinates. He changes the direction that your life is headed in. That is Christianity. If you come to him and nothing changes, you are the wrong address. Maybe you've been sold a lie. You've been sold a false Christ. Without the true Jesus, you can't possibly reach the destination that the true Jesus promises to people. So we are being called upon to reexamine what we have built our faith upon. Are we building upon the true foundation? For no other foundation can any man lay than that which has already been laid down. No other foundation. Jesus is that foundation. And what is this? Who was Jesus? The true Jesus, he was not glamorous. He was rejected. That's what we're going to be talking about. Okay. So Jesus wasn't glamorous. He was born at an inconvenient time for his parents. We said it last week, you know, God could have chosen a better time. I mean, the time of a census, population census, well, not population, it was a population census, but it was for the sake of taxation. And you have to travel, they had to travel south. It's not like they had holiday inns and Marriott hotels and things like that all over the place, where they would just go check in, book into a conditioned room, you know, for a couple of nights, with swimming pool downstairs and, you know, enjoy themselves and then come back. No. When they arrived, there was no, there was no accommodation, and the accommodation itself, had they got it, would there have been some luxury accommodation? No, that was a poor couple. How do we know they were poor? Eight days after Jesus was born, he was taken to the temple for dedication. When they got there, according to the law of Moses, they were supposed to bring a ram, a year old ram, or two turtle doves. Now, if you could afford it, you gave the ram, but if you couldn't, then you gave the turtle doves. Guess which one Mary and Joseph gave? Were the turtle doves? What does that say to you? They were not rich. They were poor. He came from a poor background. He was born in a manger. And the idea of a manger isn't the one that you see in nativity shows, in all these, you know, plays, Christmas plays that people put up. And it's all beautiful. Now, it was smelly, this was actual, the actual trough that they feed the animals from. Raised in Nazareth. Nazareth was a town in Galilee that was despised even by the Galileans themselves. So the Galileans themselves were despised by the southerners. So people in Judea, they didn't think very much of the Galileans. And recently, I found out some of the, you know, reasons, we call the Galilee of the Gentiles, you know, it was a little bit mixed. And, but the southerners, they considered themselves to be the, you know, the thoroughbred, you know, the true, the true Jews, pure, of the pure breed, you know, pure stock. And yet, even amongst the Galileans, because Peter was from Betsaida, Philip, and so, you know, some of them were from Betsaida, another town in Galilee, and when they heard that Jesus was from Nazareth, they said, "Galilee, Nazareth, can anything good come out of there?" So even amongst the despised Galileans, Nazareth was at the bottom of the pile. Jesus lived an ordinary life. He was never considered a celebrity. The Jesus that we, you know, we put stickers of him everywhere, that's a different one though. In those days, they wouldn't have been putting stickers of Jesus everywhere. He wasn't glamorous. He wasn't fashionable. It wasn't fashionable to be associated with him. What drew the crowds? What he had to say and his miracles. It was not his appearance. How do we know that? Because when he went back to his own town, his hometown, Nazareth, and they heard that he'd been doing wonders in Jerusalem, he'd been doing wonders in Carpania and some places, they thought, "Jesus? Son of Joseph? Doing this thing?" Because they were with him 30 years, they didn't see anything. Do you think that Jesus had been a local champion? They would have talked to him or talked about him in that manner? No, they wouldn't. They wouldn't have done that. It's because he was an ordinary guy. Ordinary guy. He operated among the undesirable, and that's what we're going to be talking about today. The uneducated, the tax collectors, the harlots. He was killed like a criminal without a fair trial. We will focus on that at some point. Buried in a tomb, not his own. He rose to heaven and was glorified. But I mean, he did not become a celebrity in heaven. He did not receive carnal glory in heaven. So all this carnal glorification of Jesus that you see today, it's not of God. It's just human invention. It has become fashionable to be associated with Jesus in Africa. That's why when you go on social media, everything about Jesus is become fashionable. How many people would be willing to die for this Jesus that they claim they believe in so much? No, it's because it's fashionable. It's because it's profitable. But if you go and read the Bible and discover the true identity of this Jesus, you'll discover there's nothing, I mean, if Jesus, if you hang out with Jesus today, if you hang out with Jesus today, do you think he would make you popular? The real Jesus? No. The apostles were killed for hanging out with him. How can you become popular for doing that? Which Jesus have you believed in? That's making you glamorous. Is it the true biblical Jesus? That's the question we need to ask ourselves. Like, we're going to read some passages of the Bible. Now, when we talk about Jesus hanging out with the undesirables, and we say the undesirables are, you know, tax collectors, the harlots, you know, people they regarded as sinners, there's a need to paint a picture of who the tax collectors were and why it was such a big deal for the people when they thought, "Why is he hanging out with those tax collectors?" The tax collectors were hated by the Jews. They were considered to be traitors for working for the Romans. So at a time in Jesus's day, the Romans had conquered, you know, first of all, the Greeks conquered, well, before that, the Persians conquered, and before that, the Babylonians conquered Israel. So the Babylonians conquered Israel, then the Babylonians themselves were conquered by the Persians, then the Persians were conquered by the Greeks, and then the Greek king or emperor, Alexander the Great, who conquered, you know, the, you know, conquered a huge part of the known world in those days, he died suddenly without naming a successor. And in the end, four of his generals took over from him, but they split the kingdom into four parts, you know, so the Jewish state was in one of those four parts. And Daniel, by the way, foresaw all of that and prophesied about it. Then, the, these four empires, you know, formerly all part of the Greek empire, was then what? Conquered by, conquered by the Romans. So at the time of Jesus, in Jesus's day, they were ruled over by the Romans. That's why you come across, you know, this mention of Roman soldiers everywhere. They were in charge. But what they used to do with the Romans, they were incredibly astute, you know, they came, they put some soldiers there, they put, set up some garrisons here and there just to remind you that, guys, we are around, we can do this stuff. And then they would get locals, employ locals to collect tax, and the people had to work incredibly hard. It's not like today that you get a salary, some of it is deducted, and you still have enough to deliver sometimes. I know it's not always the case, but sometimes... Sometimes, I know it's not always the case, but sometimes you have enough to live on. In those days, people were borrowing to pay taxes, they were, it's, life was a struggle. And these tax collectors, they were making a killing because the Romans didn't pay them salary. What they did was, collect the tax, this is how much we need, and keep the rest for yourself. So what did the tax collectors do? They will bump out the taxes. And that's how they became very rich, so they were hated, they were considered bottom of the pile sinners. By the, by the Jews. Many tax collectors were dishonest and abused the system by taking far too much. If you remember what Zacchaeus said, you know, he said, if I have taken from anyone, I restore four times. Well, that's what exactly was going on with the tax collectors, they were taking more, more than their due. When John the Baptist came around preaching, the tax collectors came to be baptized. And let's read about it, then the tax collectors came to be baptized and said to him, teacher, what shall we do? And he said to them, collect no more than what is appointed for you, Luke three twelve to thirteen, that was what the tax collectors did. Now I just mentioned Zacchaeus. Then Jesus entered and passed through Jericho, now behold, there was a man named Zacchaeus who was a chief tax collector, and he was rich. And he sought to see who Jesus was, but could not because of the crowd, for he was of a short stature. So he ran ahead and climbed up into a sycamore tree to see him, for he was going to pass that way. And when Jesus came to the place, he looked up and saw him and said to him, Zacchaeus, make haste and come down. For today I must stay at your house. So he met haste and came down and received him joyfully. But when they saw it, they all complained, saying, he has gone to be a guest with a man who is a sinner, sinner. He has gone to be a guest with a man who is a sinner. In other words, this guy's bottom of the pile, you are not supposed to associate with him if you're truly a man of God. Then Zacchaeus stood and said to the Lord, Lord, look, I give half of my goods to the poor. And if I have taken anything from anyone by false accusation, I restore fourfold, Luke nineteen one to eight. So you have further example of what these tax collectors were up to. Okay. Let's read some more. For if you love those who love you, what reward have you? This is Jesus talking in, in, in the sermon on the mount. For if you love those who love you, what reward have you? Do not even, the tax collectors do the same, Matthew five forty six. So you see how, what kind of contrast Jesus is drawing? He's saying, look here, if you do good to those who do good to you. If you love those who love you. Well, even armed robbers do that, they have friends, don't you know armed robbers have friends? Don't you know the worst criminals of the, of the world, they have friends, they have people that they love? Sometimes you hear of, you know, robbers, armed robbers, talking about betrayal, how somebody betrayed them, that means they expected loyalty. The worst of the worst. Wicked men like Hitler and the rest, they would have had people that they loved. From whom they expected loyalty. So Jesus said, if you are doing those things, you are no different to the tax collector. In our day and age, you might say you are no different to a rapist or some child molester or some serial killer or somebody like that. He said, if you are loving those who love you, you, you are not doing anything that anybody should clap for you. And if you greet your brethren only, what do you do more than others? Do not even tax collectors do so, Matthew four five forty seven. So you see, again, he is drawing a contrast between. The, you know, ordinary people and the tax collectors, and he says, if, or, or comparison, and if you, you, if you, you behave like them. Are you better than them? And he spoke this parable to some who trusted in themselves that they were righteous and despised others. Two men went up to the temple to pray, one a Pharisee and the other a tax collector. The Pharisee stood and prayed thus with himself, God, I thank you that I am not like other men. Extortionists, unjust, adulterers, or even as this tax collector, have you seen the word even? It keeps getting used. Even as this tax, in other words, when the Pharisee was going down the list. Of sinful people, he just kept going, then he said, even at the bottom of the pile, tax collector. Moreover, if your brother sins against you, go and tell him his fault between you and him alone. If he hears you, you have gained your brother, but if he will not hear, take with you one or two more. That by the mouth of two or three witnesses, every word may be established, and if he refuses to hear them, tell it to the church. But if he refuses even to hear the church, let him be to you like a heathen. And a tax collector, Luke eighteen fifteen to seventeen, here Jesus was teaching about. Making peace with a brother, a brother that is assented against you, but he would not listen. He will not listen to your argument, you've used every measure possible to, to, you know, bring about peace. He says, if he will not even listen to the church, let him be like a heathen and a tax collector. Now. As Jesus passed on from there, he saw a man named Matthew sitting at the tax office, and he said to him, follow me, so he arose and followed him. Now it happened as Jesus sat at the table in the house, that behold, many tax collectors and sinners came and sat down with him and his disciples. And the Pharisee saw it, when the Pharisee saw it, he said to his disciples, why does your teacher eat with tax collectors and sinners? When Jesus heard that, he said to them, those who are well have no need of a physician. But those who are sick, but go and learn what it means, I desire mercy, not sacrifice. Why did not come to call the righteous, but sinners to repentance, Matthew nine nineteen to thirteen. So what you are here, what you are seeing here is this. Jesus, first of all. Compares ordinary people to tax collectors. Then he shows you that tax collectors are bottom of the pile according to the society. Now, after he'd put them at the bottom of the pile, then he himself joined them. Do you understand? He will be reading passage after passage, Jesus telling you even that, even this, if he will not listen to you, let him be unto you like a tax collector. So you would have thought that Jesus despised tax collectors, the tax collectors were at the bottom of the pile, he was just telling you, don't be like them. No. After he had entered that picture, he joined them. To sit down and eat with them, so much so that the Pharisee said, what, what is this guy doing? What's he doing? He's sitting down eating with them. He spent three days with Zacchaeus. So my question is, if Jesus was alive today. Would he meet your standards? Would he meet your standards of a holy man? Would he meet your standards of a man of God? Because you know what I discovered, that we have our own criteria of what a man of God looks like. The reason why there is so much deception in the church today is because the criteria. For defining who a man of God is have not been set, are not based on the Bible. They are our own, we have our own criteria for saying, oh, that guy looks like a man of God, or that guy looks like a man of God. And those criteria, they are such that anybody can assume them, can meet those criteria. And the day that person meets the criteria, we will accept him. And we will be deceived. So we are being deceived in the church today, because first and foremost, we have believed in the false Jesus. Secondly, we have our own criteria of what the true man of God looks like. How do we judge people? How do we measure? Very simple. The way he talks. The way he carries himself. The clothes he wears. The few Bible passages that he prays here and there. If a guy shall do this. And do it in the way that reminds you of a man of God that you know. You will accept him as a man of God. That's what's happened. Now, when I say you, I don't necessarily mean those of you on the call right now. But that is the principle that is operating within the church right now. If somebody will come to us and talk like a man of God, whatever that means, we will accept him as a man of God. When I was growing up, in those days that we used to go to, you know, what's so-called orthodox churches. You knew the distinction between those that were truly born again, the SU people. You knew the distinction between them and those who were what we called nominal Christians. Even their dressing was different. Their conduct was different, they preached different, and. It was not possible for someone to masquerade as a preacher, it wasn't easy. It wasn't easy, because for a preacher, for a false prophet to enter the church in those days, he would have had to repent. There was no money, there was nothing attractive in the church that he, that we, this, 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 uh, Malam. Why would the Malam leave his shrine where they were giving him cows and goats and chickens and things like that? To become a pastor, a pastor who couldn't pay his bills. No, in those days, Malams weren't dressing up in suits. They were not learning Bible passages. And masquerading as apostles and prophets, as we now have the, you know, an. Explosion of false prophets in Africa. People who say they can fly. People who say they can turn into animals. In the church. How could they say something like that? They've, they've moved their business, their businesses in the shrines were failing because everybody was going to church. So they've moved into the church. And all they had to do was don a suit. Turn an accent. Learn a few Bible verses. I, a, a, a premise, decorate it properly. And Africans who love the church will, will show up. But they're not coming for Jesus, not the Jesus of the Bible. Not the one who didn't have a place to lay his head. No, they're coming to a prosperous Jesus. A Jesus who says, empty your bank account, give it to the church, and I will bless you. That's the Jesus they are coming to. That's why they will be abused. That's why they will be plundered, that's why they'll be made merchandise of. Because they forsaken the true Jesus, this is judgment. Don't you understand? Romans chapter one. He says, because they would not retain the knowledge of God, therefore God gave them up. Because what could be known about God was obvious, yet they refused to worship him. They refused to worship him according to the revelation made available. So what did he do? He gave them up. So they would stop worshiping trees, worshiping cows, worshiping objects. And, and sinning to their hearts content, when you see that, it is sign, it's a judgment. What was, what can be known about the true Jesus has been revealed, it's in the Bible. If you forsake the truth that's revealed in the Bible. Because you're looking for something more glamorous, you will be taken advantage of, you will be plundered, you'll be made merchandise of, it's judgment. That is why in this Bible study, we are going back to the true Jesus. We are going back to the true image of Jesus. Enough of the lies, enough of basing your faith on lies, on an imagination. Let's return to the truth. The true Jesus, he hung out with tax collectors. And he said, and, you know, those who are well, they don't need a physician. But rather those who are sick, those who are well, they don't need physicians, he came. Because he wanted to make himself approachable. If Jesus had come in a Rolls Royce. In those days, if he had come. On, um, in a chariot, gold-plated chariot. Hued by white horses. If he had a motorcade behind him. You know, an entourage of, 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 of people on horseback. Riding alongside him. Where would the tax collectors have gained the opportunity to be with him? Jesus was approaching Jericho. When Zacchaeus realized, he's coming my way, he's coming my way. Climb the tree. So he could see him. And when Jesus got there, he looked up and said, come down, I must spend the night in your house. He sought out a despised man. Not just to give him a little bit of alms, give him a little bit of money, go. Spend the night with him. In other words, I don't despise you. The people may despise you, but I don't despise you. I love you, and I'm willing to identify with you at the risk of ruining my reputation. Do you know that today's man of God will not do certain things because it would ruin their reputation? They can't stoop down to your level because it would ruin their reputation. They, you, you can't just walk into their presence, no. You have to go through some henchmen and secretaries. Sometimes you have to pay to see them. Jesus looked up. And said, come down, I must spend the night in your place. Which Jesus are we worshiping? You see, the image of Jesus that you have will affect the image of man of God that you have. Because, let's be honest, how can you judge somebody to be a man of God? If he's a man of God, shouldn't he resemble his father? If he has been sent, he'd been sent by God, should he not, his conduct not resemble his father? So if you're going to judge somebody, if you're going to call somebody as man of God. It follows that you must judge him by the standard. By the image of God or the image of Jesus that you have. So since you are passing of charlatans as men of God. Does it not follow that you've got a false image of Christ? Because if you had the true image of Christ, you'd have said, this guy can't possibly have been sent by Jesus. If he himself was walking around sweating, not having food to eat, using public latrine. You know, going about life so normal, and yet his servant is this glamorous guy? Who, whose gold ring can feed like a city? Where did this one come from? Who sent him? Jesus said, it is sufficient that the servant should be as his master. Which kind of servant is it that doesn't look like his master, that doesn't behave like his master? He has his own standards. Jesus was so ordinary, you needed Judas to point him out to the soldiers. It was night, they didn't have streetlights. They came with lanterns, the soldiers to arrest him. But there were at least thirteen people there, there could have been fifty, one twenty. Because Jesus didn't hang around with only the twelve. So the soldiers came, it was like, which one is Jesus, which one is Jesus? If he had this, you know that robe that, uh, what's it called, um, Sue mentioned? Now, people are saying that Jesus's robe was so precious that the soldiers were fighting over it, it shows you that Jesus wasn't poor. You know what, not only is that disingenuous, it's also poor biblical scholarship. Because I went back, after that question, I went back to search through the scriptures, and you know what I found out? The robe that the people were fighting over. It was Herod that put it on Jesus, go and read. Herod put that robe on Jesus, it wasn't Jesus's robe. Because they were mocking him as king, so they twisted thorns into a crown and put it on the head and gave him a gorgeous robe. It's there. So when the soldiers, who, who would have seen, and he wore that robe to Pontius Pilate's, this, the palace. So when the soldiers saw that, they said, hi, this one, hehe. There's no way we're going to let this one pass, we are not going to damage it even. They evidently, they, they took it off him, and beat him, so that they would not damage. They evidently, they took, they took it off him, and beat him so that they would not damage the robe. Then when they finished, they put the robe back on him. Then later they took it off again to crucify him. If he was working, wearing something, a stand, standout clothes. Why did the soldiers need Judas to point him out? He was dressed like everyone else. He needed John the Baptist to point him out. Behold, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sins of the earth, John said. Because otherwise the people wouldn't have known, it wasn't obvious that he was the Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the earth. He was ordinary and he also hung out with ordinary people. Jesus interacted with the harlots. This was particularly difficult for people. Because it's one thing saying you are showing compassion to the tax collectors, but prostitutes. Why are you allowing these ones near you? Then one of the Pharisees asked him to eat with him. And he went to the Pharisee's house and sat down to eat. And behold, a woman in the city who was a sinner. When she knew that Jesus sat at the table in the Pharisee's house, brought an alabaster flask of fragrant oil. And stood at his feet behind him weeping. And she began to wash his feet with her tears and wiped them with the hair of her head. And she quizzed his feet and anointed them with fragrant oil. Now, when the Pharisees, who had invited, the Pharisees, sorry, who had invited him, saw this, he spoke to himself saying. This man, if he were a prophet, would know what manner of woman this is who is touching him. For she is a sinner, Luke seven thirty-six, thirty-nine to thirty-nine. See, this is how the Pharisees thought. They had their idea of what a man of God looks like. Let me give, bring, bring a little bit of context here. Jesus said about, that is about the Pharisees, he said, the Pharisees sit in the seat of Moses. Therefore, do what they tell you, do what they teach you, of course, from the books of Moses. But don't do as they do because they say one thing but do something else. They are hypocrites, so don't follow in their footsteps. But listen to the teachings that they give you, which are in line with the word. So therefore, the Pharisees, they were in the position of authority. And one of the things that the Pharisees would do. It was their prerogative to decide whether somebody else was a man of God or not. They were the gate men in the kingdom of God in those days. And unless they approved you and said, okay, you can come in, you, you are not coming in. You have to go, go through them, go through their tutelage. In order to be considered to be a man of God. But then a certain guy came, he was in the wilderness preaching. Repent for the kingdom of God is at hand and the whole nation went out to him to be baptized. This guy didn't come to the Pharisees to get permission, he didn't come to the Pharisees for acknowledgement, he did not associate with them. He was in the wilderness doing his thing. So the Pharisees went out to meet him. But when they went, the people had already acknowledged, or had already acknowledged John to be a prophet. In other words, nobody was waiting for the Pharisees' opinion on the matter. So they approached John to be baptized by him, but not because they also wanted to submit to his ministry. They were doing it because of the people. I don't know if you remember an occasion where the Pharisees asked Jesus the question. By whose authority are you doing all these miracles? This power that you expect, where is it coming from? Why do you think you're asking those questions? Those were vetting questions, they were vetting Jesus. We sit in the seat of Moses, now you're coming here claiming to be from God. Okay, tell us. Why you, where did you get this power? They were vetting him. And Jesus answered this question back, he said, I also asked you this question. John's power, John's uh message, where did that one come from? Then the Pharisees said, hmm, this one is a difficult one. If we say it came from God, you ask it, why then did you not believe John? So you mean they didn't believe John? Then he said, by if we say it's of the devil, the people who stone us because the people believe he's a prophet, you see now? The Pharisees were in that situation. So these were the kind of people. And so when Jesus was interacting with this, or rather allowing this harlot to touch him. This guy who was a part of a vetting committee was just saying, who can, what is man doing? He is not meeting the standards of the man of God. That's basically what was saying in today's age, that's what it would have meant. He can't possibly be a man of God because he's allowing a sinner to touch him. Can you see just how messed up these people thinking were? Because their understanding of holiness. You could lose it with somebody touching you, the wrong person touching you. But the crux of the matter, the biggest issue that the Pharisees had was that Jesus hadn't come to them. To seek approval. On the contrary, his teachings were clashing with theirs. Eventually, they said, we've had enough, we must get this guy killed. Jesus was killed because he did not meet the standards. Of a man of God in those days. That's what I'm trying to get at. The people whose voice mattered, do you know that they managed to incite the whole crowd in Jerusalem to say crucify him? When these same people had said hail him on Palm Sunday. On Palm Sunday, five days earlier, they had said hail him. And yet, on whose Friday they said crucify him? Because the Pharisees managed to turn their opinions. Why? Because they were the ones who approved people, they were the ones that if this one is holy, is holy. Money to talk these people into believing this guy was a sinner. In one place, they called him, they said, you are a Samaritan and have a demon, that's what they told him. That's why I make that, I made that poster, I posted it there, the Jesus have a demon. They said, you have a demon because you are Samaritan, you are Samaritan. Why? They were assassinating his character. They were basically saying, if you will not seek approval from us, if you will not go through our standard, if you don't meet. With our approval, we will show you what we do to people who go against us. But we even call you an ordinary man, we say you are a sinner, we say you have a demon, we say you are Samaritan, we will even ignore your heritage. Who Jesus are we worshiping today? Because the Jesus of the Bible, he was rejected by the religious people of his day. The most pious religious people were the ones that rejected him. So if, who do you think would reject him if he came today? Do you think that those people would be beggars? No, the atheists today who are attacking us. Many of them will follow Jesus, if the true Jesus came today, many of them will follow them, follow him. Because they are disgusted with the type of Christianity that we are selling to them. Which is a perverse Christianity, it's not from the Bible. Something has changed in the message that we preach, something has changed in the image of Jesus. That we hold dear. There is a need to go back to the Jesus of the Bible. We know the story of the Samaritan woman. Jesus was moving from Jerusalem to Galilee. And had to cross the region of Samaria, you know the geography of Israel, Samaria. Today, that area is Palestinian authority that controls that area. Which is quite interesting, some things never change. In those days, the Samaria, the area of Samaria was, you know, was kind of alien. Was part of, was part of Israel, was part of Palestine of those days. But the people living there went really true Jews. They were mixed. Now, Jesus wanted to go pastor, you know, go through that city. He got there, sent his disciples out to go and get some food. Let's read about it. So he came to a city of Samaria, which is called Saika, near the plot of ground that Jacob gave to his son Joseph. Now Jacob's world was there, Jesus therefore being wearied from his journey, sat thus by the well. It was about the sixth hour. A woman of Samaria came to draw water, Jesus said to her, give me a drink. For his disciples had gone away into the city to buy food. Then the woman of Samaria said to him, how is it that you being a Jew, ask of me, ask a drink of me. Or from me, a Samaritan woman, but Jews have no dealings with Samaritans. Jesus answered and said to her, if you knew the gift of God and who it is. Who says to you, give me a drink, you would have asked him and he would have given you life, given water or living water. The woman said to him, sir, you have nothing to draw with and the well is deep. Where then do you get that living water? Please can everyone mute themselves? I'm hearing some background noises. So, let's go back. Jesus answered and said to her. Um, no, let's, let's go back to verse eleven. The woman said to her, say you have nothing to draw with and the well is deep. Where do you get that living water? Are you greater than our father Jacob, who gave us the world and drank from it himself? As well as his sons and his livestock? Jesus answered and said to her. Whoever drinks of this water will thirst again. But whoever drinks of the water that I shall give him will never thirst. But the water that I shall give him will become in him a fountain of water springing up onto eternal life. The woman said to him, sir, give me this water that I may not thirst, nor come here to drink. Jesus said to her, go and call your husband and come here. The woman answered and said, I have no husband. Jesus said to her, you have well said, I have no husband, for you have had five husbands. And the one whom you now have is not your husband, in that you spoke truly, John four eleven to seventeen. So, what's the point here? Jesus, when Jesus's disciples came back, because he'd been sent out to go and buy food, when they came back, they saw Jesus talking to this woman. Now, not only would Jews not have anything to do with Samaritans. This, you know, you had a single man talking to a single woman. Who was also a Samaritan, who I say single because she was not married. And the disciples were just wondering, what's, what's he up to? What's he, what's going on here? What I'm trying to say is that Jesus was very unconventional. He did what his father led him to do. And sometimes the things that he did, they didn't meet with the approval even of his closest men, his disciples. Today's man of God will not associate with certain people. Now, of course, when it comes to the issue of, you know, the sexes and things like that. There are precautions to be taken, there's no question about that, you know. But Jesus does not despise people. This woman had had four husbands. And she was now living with a faith. In the culture of those days, even by Samaritan standards, it was, it was a bit much. But Jesus did not despise this woman. He spent time with her. And eventually led her into the kingdom. He was a very different man of God. It wasn't the kind of man of God that says, you know, that only, there are men of God today. If you invite them to your church, they will first of all want to know how big your church is. You know, how, what is the size of congregation? Because they don't want to be preaching to a high-fived church. So that's the first question they ask you. Then they'll ask you, they will name their price, although that comes later. They will ask about the conditions. Why are you going to put me up? What kind of hotel? They will show you the standards that must be kept. Finally, they will charge you a fee. As much as fifty thousand, depending on the caliber of the pastor, the, or the preacher that you are bringing in. For one appearance, are these men of God or celebrities? Are these men of God or celebrities? Celebrities will charge you, celebrity sportsmen will charge you. In the days of Usain Bolt, Asaph, Asaph Powell was mentioning. You know, those of you that watched um what the Myers video. Asaph Powell, you know, the former world record holder in hundred meters. Was talking about how much he was charging, appearance fee, just to come and run. They do that in the world, it's fine. But if you say you are a servant of somebody that used to not have a place to lay his own head. You're a servant of someone who didn't used to have food to eat sometimes. On the Sabbath, they were walking through somebody's cornfield. And they plucked some of the corn, rubbed it in their hands, blew the chaff off and ate, that was their lunch. If you claim to be a servant of that guy, how come the servant, there are no similarities between the servant and the master? Where is the simplicity of Jesus? Why do we now have men of God? Who will give the folks in Hollywood a run for their money? Your conduct doesn't differ from a Hollywood star. Hasn't something changed in the image of Jesus? That we now have. So I think I'm going to stop here and round up. And then we will do a question time, if anybody has questions. Uh, or contributions, then please feel free to share them. This is what we, we do in this Bible study. First, first of all, we, you know, we do the main talk and then afterwards we do question and answer time. So we've seen that Jesus wasn't like your ordinary man of God. He wasn't afraid to hang out with tax collectors, sinners, people that were despised. We've seen that the people of Jesus's day, they had standards for what a man of God looked like. And we today have our own standards for what a man of God looks like. And because we have those standards, the people that are occupying the pulpit. All they had to do was meet those standards. They had to learn some slangs, they had to learn, and today they are ready, they are wearing their white suits. If we have been taken advantage of, if we have been deceived, if we have been plundered. It's because we lowered the standards, opened the door for people to come in. If we go back and do what people used to do thirty, forty years ago. The bar was set so high that, you know, the devil could send in his best, his best guy. And he would be found out. Because the people sitting in the pews, they only wanted the true Jesus. Jesus said, my sheep hear my voice. They know my voice, they will not go after a stranger. Which kind of sheep today follows strangers? Which kind of sheep? How can this be Jesus's sheep? That follow stranger. Today this man said something as they're going, another man said something, no. When the sheep are so tuned into the, the voice of the master. Somebody enters the pulpit and doesn't talk like the master, they were like, who's this guy? Who brought him here? But today we've lowered the standards, so anybody can enter the pulpit. And we can't even tell, that's the worst part, we can't even tell that we are dealing with a charlatan. That's what's going on, folks. And that's why we're doing this Bible study. So that we may realign our thinking with the biblical image of Jesus. I'll stop here. Let's see who we've got on the call. So thank you all very much, thank you, um, Breck was here, thank you, Sister Loretta is here, Bishop. Oh, Baba Shira, well done, you came today, um. Good, Araba, good, Irene. Okay, so who will go first? Who wants to, who wants to share with us what they've learned? Um, or if you've got a question, equally feel free to ask them. Yes, okay, so Breck, oh yes, you've got your hand up.
Today's lesson had been very inspiring to me.
Great.
There's a song that um I heard Loretta sing. Uh, about six months ago or something and. It, it's kind of caught me off guard.
Okay.
And what we have learned today makes me realize that what the gentleman sang. Was exactly what you have preached to us today. I'll try to see whether I can give you some of the lyrics. It says, one passion, um, one purpose, one passion. I want to find you and when I find you, let me, let me know you more and more. And when I find you, I'll find myself.
Amen.
I think it takes us back to who Jesus is to us. And I'm very grateful for this, thank you.
Amen, amen, thank you very much, that's very powerful, that's very powerful, thank you. Okay, while we're waiting for that, um, Shiloh, anything to share with us today?
Um, today, not really, thank you. Uh, it's been an interesting topic, listening to how Jesus function in his, um. Um, especially at the priesthood for us and how we have to follow him. I've just been listening to it and, um, not much question to ask today, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll come to you, Araba, anything to share today? Good evening.
Good evening. I don't have any questions, but I, I was, you know, like, you said, what you said about Jesus hanging out with, um, prostitutes, tax collectors. So in our contest today, I want us to declare something.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, like if I hang out with a, a known prostitute. And they'll say, show me your friend and I'll show you your character, or then people will think that. Well, I want to know the context, like.
Okay, no, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, yeah. You're right, obviously, the, um, the problem that we have in Christianity today is a problem of light. How much light do we have within ourselves? I remember a, a man of God talking about it some time back, he said. We are supposed to be the light of the world. So if we have light in us, then when we interact with people, what happens? We dispel the darkness in them, not the other way around. It's not a case of you go and hang out with somebody and that person then turns you into, or lures you into doing the things that they have been doing, that's not how it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be that we, we have so much light in us. That when we come into contact with them. You know the word Peter said, have mercy on me and Messena. You, when we come into contact with them, they know that there's something inside you and they want to know you're God, that's how it ought to be. What has happened is that we, so very often, there is very little difference between the lives that we're living and the lives that other people are living. So therefore, that impact is not happening. So if we go back to working on ourselves. Jesus said, have salt in yourselves. So that what we have can start to impact other people. Then we won't have to worry. Because when you say hang out with a prostitute or somebody, what, what exactly do you mean? Do you mean that, you know, the, you are, you are best friends? Even that is not a problem. As long as you are friends with the person on your terms. So that when the person is in your presence, they know things they mustn't, they mustn't say or do. You set the tone. But if it is such that. They don't even know you are Christian. They can drag you into anything. Then of course you have to be careful that you don't get dragged down. So there's context, you are right, when you said, you know, what's the context, you are right, there's a context to all of this. But the point in bringing out Jesus, hanging out with people. The down and outs and prostitutes and all of those, was that he, he didn't think he was superior to people. Even though he was the son of God. But obviously, they didn't transform him. He transformed them, does that make sense?
Sure it does, and from all that you said, I think that, um. We really need, you know, I'm, so, that Jesus, I've been so like, I, I, I have to take you. I have to delete this for you from my memory.
Yeah.
And then, yes, this new Jesus that you are talking about, um. I'm trying to create a picture of you, that, you know. Uh, I, I've been very sober, you know, I've been listening quietly and. I don't know, it's like I feel a bit sad, I don't know what's there.
Why sad?
I don't know that, it, it's like, have we been deceived, I don't know, I feel like. So, those of, those of us here, what about most people who, who will not hear this or so?
So that's, that's our job, that's why we're learning. Yes, that's where we're learning, so we can go out there and teach people. Because many people don't even know this. They don't know that they've been sold a lie, they don't know that the, the Jesus that they are claiming to believe in. That's nothing to do with the Jesus of the Bible. And when we start, we're going to do like a study of the church of Corinthians, you know, maybe, I don't know how soon, maybe next week, maybe the week after, we'll see. But when we start talking about it, you will see the parallels between the Corinthian church and what's happening today. You know, not, not, there's nothing new on the planet, like Solomon said, there's nothing new. The thing that you are seeing right now, similar things have happened before. But when, when, when Paul the Apostle saw those things happening, he was in anguish. You wrote to them. You know, when you read the, the second Corinthians, you see that the tone is very different. And the reason was because he was seeing the devil coming in. Using other avenues. If a church set up by Paul the Apostle itself could become corrupt. How much more, the ones that we are setting up left, right and center? Okay. So Bishop, I'll come to you, anything to share with us today?
Uh, not, not, not really, no.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, God bless you. Okay, let me come to you, uh, High Priest.
Um, good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Yeah. Um, huh, this matter, eh? All I can say is we have made our God in our own image. So that's one thing. We've made a grieving image of something in heaven, which is not really that thing. So, um, I think partly because of the poverty and hunger in Africa. We grew up with a whole lot of believing, you hear some being sanctimentally interviewed, do something new in my life. Another day has come, do something new, so we are always looking for the new flashy thing. And, um, so it's informed the way many people think the gospel should be. When you try to say anything, they say you have a poverty mentality, a pastor once told me that. So, um, as for me, uh, I'm always a rebel, it's part of the reason I can't stay in any church. And also to help address, uh, the sister who spoke earlier. That she was sad, I understand where she is coming from, that she deleted an image of Christ. Uh, so, uh, my sister, you don't really have to delete it. Maybe the context you are speaking of is very different from what else we see right now. Jesus now is glorified. When you see him, you desire him in an aw- awesome way now. In a very holy, you will want to be where he is forever. So he's referring to that image we had of a Jesus who existed some time ago. Not how awesome he is, he is, he is God. So he's desirable, so don't see him as someone not to be, um, not awesome, he is. But he is referring to that carnal mentality we had of some glamorous human being at that time who was a star. Yeah, just to put it in context.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, you know, thank you for that. Yeah, so that is, of course, the glorified Jesus, you know, uh, when John saw him, he, there was no breath left in him. He couldn't even, he was too awesome to behold, okay? So the glorified Jesus, when you see him, you know, yes. You will know that you've seen, you've seen God, but. Before you get to the glorified Jesus, Jesus lived on earth to paint a certain picture for us of how we must conduct ourselves. You know, the Bible says that, in Hebrew one, it says that God who spoke to us through the fathers, to the prophets, has in the last days spoken to us through his son. And it wasn't just the words that Jesus spoke, that was the message, but his very lifestyle was the message. And we are, and, and that was painted for us so that we might pattern our lives after. Okay. And so if we have deviated from that one, the Jesus that the Bible described for us. If we deviated from that one, that is the one that we're talking about. But of course, the resurrected Jesus, he is glorious, but even then it's not a carnal glory. Yeah, so thank you for that contribution, Fred, let me come to you, um, Reverend, Chrissy, anything to share with us today?
Oh, yeah, um, thank you, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just to add to my sister, I mean, this evening has been very refreshing, I mean personally, but sad as well. Uh, sad in the context that this transactional Jesus that has been sold. Especially in the African church that is being exported. It, it, it's scary. You know, like you rightly said, we have changed the Christian standard and we are practicing our own. If someone is walking down the street. Without a Bible. And not in a church, can you tell he's a Christian? Can you leave your mobile phone in church, leave your seat and still come back to it? Because it looks as if what we are receiving is what we are reproducing. The Jesus they receive in the book of Antioch, the evidence was clear. The result was said that they called them Christians.
Yes.
So what we are reproducing should tell us that the Jesus we've received is not the Jesus of the Bible. Else the result should be the same.
Exactly.
So I like the way you said it is our duty to relearn and share with others also. Because, believe you me, the standard of Christianity now is scary. If you meet someone, you say you are Christian, then you look at the car you drive. You look at the, and it's like, that is the measure of our spirituality, where did we get that from? So, I mean, um, it's so refreshing, but a bit scary and sad. Uh, but I trust that as we keep learning, we will be able to also spread it, that as many as possible can receive it, thank you.
Amen, thank you, thank you. Let me come to you, Sister Loretta, anything to share with us?
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
So whilst you were preaching, uh, the Holy Ghost laid a, a scripture on my heart. And when you look at, um, the Emir chapter six sixteen, says that. The Lord said to his people, stand at the crossroad and look, ask for the ancient path. And where the best road is, walk in it, and you will live in peace. But they said, no, we will not, hallelujah. There's an ancient way. There's a path that God has created for us Christians. That's the landmark that he has given to us as Christians, as a checkpoint in our lives. You know, when you read the second book, it says that, steady to show yourself approved, a workman, then there not to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of truth. Christianity is a lifestyle. You don't live your life in the mercy of pastors, you live, you live, you, 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 you live, you take your life and you live it. Because the Bible is available for everyone to study from it. And then we are accountable for the things that we do in this life.
Yes.
So the Lord said that the Lord said to them, to his people, stand at the crossroad and look, ask for the ancient path. And where the road lead, where the road is, walk in it, and you live in peace. You notice as you are saying, we have become like, um, um, microwave Christians. We want everything quick, we want everything to be fast for us, so we are looking for a prophecy, we are looking for a word, we are looking for, if you go through a situation. It is not from God, but one of the virtues of a Christian is long suffering. Now, if you are going through a long-suffering situation, they say that is the devil that is, uh, worrying you. But you know, there's a place that when you position yourself, the systems of this world will not get you.
Amen.
In the book of Acts, when, um, uh, the, there was, there was, there was, there was a misunderstanding in sharing the food. And so the apostles had to come in. And so they said they should bring men of good character. Because we cannot give ourselves, cannot, cannot come and serve tables. Bring us men of good character, that look, that's, they can, that, that can serve the table. Who give ourselves the teaching of the word and prayer. That is our, that is what we are supposed to do as children of God. But when it comes to prayer, we don't pray, when it comes to reading the word, we don't do the word, so then you'll be deceived. You'll be deceived, because when you go to church, then they tell you something. And then you come home and you don't, you don't, you don't, they give you a good prophecy. You come after, after a period of time, don't see it manifest in your life, then you start doubting a lot of God. What is a sure word of prophecy concerning your life? There's a sure word of prophecy concerning your life, if you don't hold on to the truth, because the devil says that if there are prophecies, it will go away. Talking, it will, it, it will go away, but what will not leave us is the sure word of prophecy, and that is what, what, uh, we need to get in our spirits. When the word of God is in your spirit, you cannot be deceived. Whenever, when you are, when, when you have the light of God in you, darkness cannot be around you. It's because, it's because we, we, we have not allowed ourself or the Holy Spirit to use us. I always tell people that, you know, you, 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 you find yourself in certain situation. And your brain things are not changing, it's because you're not using the right kind of temperature to dissolve that situation. There is a temperature that you get, that's when you are praying and you are saying the word, that situation cannot stay. So I, 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 I'm grateful for, for, for you sharing the word of God with us, for us to know the true Jesus. The true Jesus can only be known by yourself, you should, you should know it's in you. You are seeing it, but our spirit should also bear witness with what you are saying. Because after you have, you finish preaching and then we go back to our normal activities, leaving the word and not praying. We'll come back next week and then we are square one. You have taught us the word, and then we also go back and then we are doing our own research, finding the way we can live, uh, uh, we can live according to the standard of God. You know, the life, our life become better and those around us will also benefit from what you are teaching us, God bless you.
Oh, that's really wonderful, thank you, thank you, as ever, you know, blessed by what you just shared. Irene, let me come to you.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Today, I was, uh, um, I've been blessed and I think, um. I've, I've been blessed listening to the teachings and I've been blessed by the contributions that. Uh, my, my brothers and sisters are giving. Um, I don't think I, I, I have much to add, but. Then it's sad to say, to look at, like the African church. Cause I think, you know, as Fred said, because of poverty.
Yes.
You know, the, 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 the poor man. I mean, will believe anything. Any sign of, uh, uh, um, something that looks like hope, even if it's false hope. Or even if, um, he, he's being deceived. So you always see that, um, when, um, like, uh, these Ponzi schemes and those things come. It's the poor that are robbed the most. Not, the rich can lose money, but not as much as the poor. Because the poor will always look for, um, like, uh. Is, is vulnerable to being deceived and, and we, poor is not necessarily, like, when in the Christian context. It's not just, um, the, um, not having money. But poor, poor in spirit said that the person has not studied the word. Doesn't like, hasn't, has, hasn't studied to know God by himself. So somebody is, must be the one directing him to that God. And that is why we embrace a lot of mediators. I was sitting there today and I was thinking that, you know. Prophecies are good and all that, but if you look at the ministry of Jesus, every time he gave prophecy, it was even straight to the point. Anytime he used like word of knowledge or. In, in the, in the case of the, uh, uh, is it the Samaritan woman? Who said, oh, I, 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 I have no husband, that he said. Uh, he, he was, he, 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 I mean, his, his use of prophecy was said that it transformed the person's life. But, but look at the African church. The kind of things that go, the kind of drama that goes on in church. And that is what we grew up to see, so it has become like, that is how Christianity should look like.
Exactly.
And if we don't take time and like. And if we don't take time, and like, for us, we are fortunate to know the truth, to guide our children, if we don't take time. In like twenty years to come in Africa, it will be hard to even know what. Like, the truth was from the beginning, because it will be so diluted and other, like. Bringing like things of a traditional beliefs into the church. It, 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 it's so sad to watch. I mean, many churches in, in Ghana, it's so common for. The preacher to travel to, let's say, Israel or some place and come and say, like, I have this material, I have. Oil, I have, oh, 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 I have this, I have that. And it has become normal, because we are, we are used to seeing, okay, we have been taught that communion wine is powerful. It can heal and all that, so then if you have the communion wine in your home. Not that I am despising the use of those things, but we have become a church that, like, you know, just like, um. Uh, like, will I say, fetish priests and those people, they use a lot of things, so so bring this one, let's live. So, uh, uh, we have embraced Christianity into the church, and it's so normal, but we have called it oil, we've called it that, we've called it that. And it's sad, but we thank God that at least we, we, we are studying the word of God and. I pray that the Lord uses us to also impart the lives of others.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, thank you. And, and that's the relevance of this Bible study. The reason why we are putting so much effort into, into doing this, you know, today I was so tired. I slept before the, the session, just to, you know, recharge my batteries before, before the meeting, because I would be fresh. I was so tired, but the reason why, even though I'm exhausted, I will just keep pressing ahead. You know, spending a lot of time doing this, the research, so as, is because I know. That we have to contend for the faith that was once delivered to us. Somebody died. Just so that you could have King James Bible. Much of the work of, of King James Bible was done by a guy called William Tindale, who was killed. Burned at the stake. And as he was dying, he was saying, Lord, open the eyes of the King of England. And God answered his prayer, and the king commissioned the King James Bible. And a lot of the work that he did found its way into the King James Bible. People literally died just to hand us a Bible. So the least we can do is to take this Bible and disseminate it, teach it, so people may know the truth. If we don't do it, like Irene said, next generation, they won't even know what Christianity is. Do you know, you remember the Dark Ages? When people were going to priest, pay money, so that their loved ones will not spend eternity in a place called Purgatory, who was invented by the Catholic Church? That's what will happen again. What you said, when ministers going to Israel and coming back with goods, merchandise, that they call, oh, this one, holy this, holy that. It has been done already, in the, in the, in the Middle Ages, if you go and read. People used, it was, there was a whole industry. They would go there and they would come back. They would have the, the, the cloth that, uh, somebody used to wipe his face, the, this, the clothes Jesus wore, the, this, they were goods. Merchandise, big business around that. And we've gone right back to that same thing. Why have we gone right back? Because of darkness. Whenever there is darkness, whenever there's no truth, people do exactly the same thing. If you are in all in the room and the light goes off, the behaviour is always the same. Darkness. What you are seeing is darkness, the product of darkness. That is why we must do this Bible study. And then not just be perpetual students of the word, but also take the word and start sharing it with other people. Start having an impact. A time will come when I will start pushing you guys. To set up your own social media platforms. And start talking and sharing what you have learnt. I'll start encouraging you to do that. So that you can begin to have a reach, because no matter how hard. I preach, I will never be able to reach the people that you can reach. Everybody has a sphere of influence, and yours has influence, I don't have any jurisdiction there. So everybody has to do his job. And the time will come that, you know, I, I, I believe the Lord will be encouraging us strongly each person to start doing it. So that we can take what we have learnt and disseminate it, so that the world may benefit. Thank you all for joining us today. I've, I've enjoyed it, you know, we had good attendance, um, which was very, very good. So, um, God bless you all, and then we'll meet you again, we'll meet again next week, by God's grace. Have a lovely weekend.